Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing none, is anyone in the virtual world like to speak at this time?
No requests to speak.
Thank you very much. Move on now to public hearing item number one. This is a time for the public hearing to discuss the 2013-2021 Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2020. May we please have the presentation from staff?
Good morning, Mayor Udi, and good morning, Councilmember. Every year, the state requires that every city report on its housing progress and housing production back to the state. And the deadline to report this report is April 1st, which is coming up. The intent of the report is really to make note of the housing progress production and what the city has done since the last housing element. The city currently has an adopted housing element that was adopted in 2013. And at that time, the city provided documentation that the city will implement certain programs. And those programs are noted on one of the table in your attachment. But overall, for the current year, for the year of 2020, the city has produced or actually issued 17 building permits for construction. Of that 17, 14 units are for accessory dwelling units, or three of which are conversions of existing garages or storage space. That means 11 of those are new accessory dwelling unit detached from the home. You'll see that in the report. Staff is not counting these 13 or 17, 13, 14 accessory dwelling units as low or very low income unit in meeting the regional housing needs assessment that is allocated for the city. And that's because the city had already met its two-unit requirements back in 2018 and 2019. For that reason, we are counting these accessory dwelling unit as moderate income unit. It has no effect on the city's commitment to producing housing unit as we promised this state that we did in 2013. State legislature also prohibit a city from carrying a credit forward, meaning that even though the city had issued building permit for these 14 units that we did in 2020, we're not allowed to take these 14 units for the next cycle. So for that reason, staff is simply asking the city council to open the public hearing and direct staff to file the report with the State Department by the deadline of April 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Choi, for your report and for the work that went into today, preparing us for today. My question concerns, and I think I discussed this probably, you might have heard, about the 14 units and listing them as moderate income. Even though technically we've met our burden, I was interested to see if there could be follow-up in that regard so we can more accurately keep track. Because over time, whether it's a five or 10-year span, I think the community would like to know the efforts, and the greater community, I will say around us, would like to know the efforts that San Marino is making to have a diversity of housing stock. So is there a way, after the fact, to go back to those permit holders or the construction of these 14 units and make any inquiries and just keep track of those for our own, even if we're not reporting it officially?
Sure. On the city record aspect of it, staff can certainly go back to conduct phone interview, which is a process that we had done in past years in order to the income level of these units for the state. But we can certainly do that going forward every year just for the city's record-keeping purpose. And as a follow-up, the city staff did contacted the 14 property owners that did receive the accessory dwelling units permit yesterday. And we were not able to reach four of the property owners. However, of the 10 property owners that we spoke with, only two property owner intends to lease out the accessory dwelling units. The remaining eight owner intend to use those unit for personal purposes or for family members where they will not be collecting income from those units.
Thank you very much for the follow-up, and just to keep track of that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tull.
Yes, it's with respect to something you just mentioned, and that is the use of the units. And in the Housing Element Report, there's reference to the tenure, and it's either renter or owner. Does that mean they're presently being used by the owner or that they're intended eventually to be used by the owner? I'm not sure what that means.
Sure. And you're correct, Councilman Tull, that for that particular column, the intent is to assess the intended occupant of the accessory dwelling unit at the time that the city issued a building permit.
Okay, so the fact that you reached out, discovered that two indeed intend to use it as a rental property does not show up on this report as of yet?
Correct. The report was produced prior to staff reaching out to the individual property owner yesterday. And we can certainly go back and update that particular column to reflect the two properties or the two accessory dwelling unit that will be occupied by potential renter.
So you'd updated on the report, not necessarily on just our internal records?
We will update internal record as well.
Okay, on both? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wong, any questions?
No, I have no question. Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, very quickly, thank you for the report. On page two of the agenda item under discussion, in the bottom third of the first paragraph, it talks about infill development, or replacement rather. What is the relevance or the purpose of commenting on infill? I just find it interesting that we need to include that.
This is, the purpose of that particular information about infill development is really to identify that the city is, at its current state, is a built-out city, meaning that we have very little vacant land to add additional net increase of housing unit within the city limitation. And that the unit that are being built today, they are the result of demolishing existing unit in order to accommodate the new replacement unit. To that extent, the accessory dwelling units, when they are not a conversion of an existing unit, or even when they are, they are recognized as new unit because they're not infill. We are not demolishing existing unit to create these 14 accessory dwelling units. So from state standpoint, these are the plus unit, the net increase within the city limit in terms of housing production. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions?
No, thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you. If I could open it up for public comment, is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, is there anyone like to speak?
No one. It's your question to speak on this item.
Are there any final questions from council before we close the public hearing? Public hearing and open it up for council deliberations. Dr. Wong, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Tull?
No, thank you very much.
Ms. Shepherd-Romney?
Just, I wanted to thank you for doing the follow-up work yesterday and getting a little bit more information for us and your updating of our records so they're as accurate as they can be. I understand some are out of town or unreachable. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Similar. Thank you for staying on track with this. Appreciated.
I have no further comments. Is there a motion, please?
I move to receive and file the 2020 Housing Element Annual Progress Report and also to file the report with the Office of Planning and Research, OPR, and the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, before April 1st, 2021 deadline.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Tull?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. We're on to new business now. Item number two, the review of the draft of the next year's capital equipment plan and five-year forecast. May we please have the
Yes. Thank you indeed, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, council. Thank you for making yourselves available on this St. Patrick's Day festive occasion to get to talk about the budget. I am wearing green glasses in celebration. We are here to begin the budget process in earnest. You have had a couple of meetings so far where we've done the introductory matters. If you turn your attention to the very last page of the agenda, page 90, you will see the budget calendar. And that is a path of where we have been and where we are going and where we are today. So far, you've heard some basic information as we've begun the budget process. You've done some brainstorming on potential work plan and/or budget items for next year. Staff is hard at work on understanding those, analyzing them, and figuring out what to include in the budget. And you'll be hearing from us again about that, not at this meeting, not at this meeting, but at a later meeting. We also had some introductory information from the Finance Director at a previous meeting so that you would understand better where we are in this fiscal year, where we think we're going in future fiscal years, so that you can consider what finances might be available to make your decisions this upcoming year. What we are doing today is we are moving into the hard part of the budget process, the technical part. We are starting with our CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan. And this year, we've made the change to divide that into two meetings. In previous years, you've dealt with both the equipment portion and the infrastructure portion on the same meeting date, which has made for some very long meetings, as I'm sure you all well recall. So this year, we've split them in two so that you can be fresh and bright-eyed as we deal with both pieces. And today, we will be discussing the capital equipment. This is not a speak now or forever, hold your peace type of meeting. This is just a meeting where you give us some direction on what you'd like us to include into the budget proposal. What that means is that your decisions today are not final. You have another opportunity to reconsider how this looks to you once you get to see the whole budget put together. Today is just equipment. That means that it's in a little bit of a vacuum. You're missing some of the context of what you might want to spend on infrastructure, what we might be setting aside for our operating budget. So that's why it's not final. And that's why, once you give us direction on all of the components, we'll bring you back the final document, and you can still make whatever changes you want to make. And that meeting is slated for May 28th for consideration of the proposed budget. So that is where we are today. I want to issue some thank-yous and then just go through three items for you before we get into the discussion nitty-gritty. First, I want to thank our Finance Director, Paul Chung, and our Parks and Public Works Director, and of course, City Engineer, Michael Throne. They are intimately involved with all of the guts of the budget. And they have put in quite a lot of work to get us to this point, so I really appreciate it. The executive team as well, and the support staff in all of our departments have really helped to prepare these items for you and everything that you're going to see going forward. And of course, last but certainly not least, I want to thank our finance liaisons who have been working tirelessly with us for several years now to continue to refine our process in a way that is efficient and effective and still ensures that the council is exercising its responsibility to look carefully at the budget proposals for the community. So just a couple of items by way of overview. As I said, there are three things I want to walk through. The first is I want to talk to you about the process that it took to get here. So what you have in front of you today are 13 items that are being proposed for equipment for the next fiscal year into the budget. One of those items, which is on page 76, is a rebudget. That's the rescue ambulance. You approved that last year. We have already ordered it, but due to COVID delays, it will not actually arrive until next year, which means the payment would have to happen next year, which means you would need to rebudget the money for that. So that 13 that we're presenting to you includes that one. The process that we use is we start off, I believe, the mayor likes to use the phrase like kids in a candy store, and we think about all of the things that might be helpful in operations to go forward. And that's kind of our wish list, our dream list, and we think about that. The first thing that happens is that each department head does their own due diligence in prioritizing their items and making some good decisions about what they really do want to request for next year. Once the department heads have done their prioritization, it then goes to City Engineer Director Throne, and he does another round. Obviously, department heads aren't privy to what everybody else is requesting early on in the process. And it really is Director Throne's job to look at the context of what everybody is requesting citywide and make another set of prioritization based on what makes sense to request for the next year. Then, after he's made his best efforts, then it comes to me. And I do another round of prioritization and eliminate some items that I don't think are pressing for next year and reduce the list down even further. When we finished that prioritization process, we were down to 12 items. That 12 did include the rescue ambulance that I just mentioned, the rebudget. And that was what was slated to come forward to you. We do, as part of our process, share the budget drafts with many of our boards and commissions to get their feedback. They are important members of the community and often have important and thoughtful comments to make. And when the proposal went through the Public Safety Commission, they preferred to move up an item that I had pushed back, which was the fire command vehicle. So although I had not prioritized it for next year, they felt strongly that it was in the community's best interest to do that next year, and they requested that it be moved back up as a year one. And so, out of respect for them and courtesy, we have included that in your proposal for next year. And that is the 13th item that you have in front of you. So we have done many, many, many rounds of prioritizing to get here. And this is what we are prepared to stand behind for what we need for next year. Very quickly, I just want to talk briefly, and this is mostly for the community and not necessarily for the council. But I want to just walk you through the form and how to read it. So I'm looking at page 48, which is the first form that we're going to be going through. There's a lot of information on the form. You can see up at the top, there's the title, whether it's a new request or a request that has rolled over.
Which page, 48?
I'm so sorry, page 48 of 90, either page 48 of 90 or page 2-32, whichever you prefer.
Okay, so you're just showing a one request?
Just for example. Yes, exactly. And so you have a paragraph up at the top that explains the item. Down at the very bottom, there are any extra notes that we might have for you on cost estimates so you can understand how we've gotten there. If you look at the capital cost estimates by year, this is the bottom third of the form. You can see where we've been and where we're going. The column that is bold, squared, and highlighted, that's the proposal for next year. But you can see what we've spent previously and potentially what we might spend in the future. The main thing I want to draw your attention here to is the total anticipated funding box, which is kind of right in the middle over on the right side. If you see something that says just like this, 591 capital equipment, that's our fund. That's our capital equipment fund. It's funded by our capital reserves. Because it's in our capital budget and not in our operating budget, it isn't technically the general fund. But for all practical purposes, this is the general fund money. This is the city's money that we would be using to purchase something like this. I want to draw your attention to that because there are several items in here that are not being paid for out of 591, out of the capital fund. And insofar as that might make your decision different, I just want to be sure to draw your attention to it. So, for example, if you look at page 66, this is Councilmember Tull, just another example for you to see something a little bit different. So if you turn to page 66, you will see that in that funding box, it now says 212 Air District. That is not city money proper. That's money from AQMD that's allocated to us that is restricted in terms of what we can purchase. But we do need to use that money. We have it available to us.
I'm sorry, what page?
Sure, 66, page 66 of 90 or page 2-50. And these are just examples. And you'll see, as you go through all of these forms, you just want to take a look at that proposed funding box because it does tell you whether the city is paying for it or whether it's, I believe, the phrase we like to use is "other people's money" to pay for some of those things. So hopefully, that's just a helpful way to look through the form. And in case there are members of the community either listening live or watching this recorded later, it's another helpful tool to understand how to go through these budget forms. So practically speaking, this year, what we will be doing is going through the 13 items one by one. Those start on page 48 and go to page 79. I apologize inadvertently, page 40 is a memo related to the computer replacement. That should have been included between pages 48 and 79, so it's not in the most helpful location. But it does relate to the computer replacement cycle, so you may want to refer back to that. We'll go through them one by one. What will ultimately happen is Director Throne will give you a one-to-two sentence overview of what the item is. And then, any questions that you have beyond that will probably be answered by either Finance Director Chung or the Requesting Department, and not so much by Director Throne. We'll look for a straw poll from you all on what to include into the budget. If three of you are in support of including it today, at least three of you, then we will include it in the proposed budget that you'll see presumably on May 28th. If there is not three-person support at least, then we would not include it in the budget. And again, you're not wedded to your decisions today. You will have another opportunity. The future years, just for your information, start on page 80. They go from pages 80 to 89. We don't expect to go through those today. The only reason that we would have any discussion on those is if you saw something that piqued your interest, that you wanted to move up and add to those 13 items. And if so, we'd be happy to talk to you about those, but that's not in our plan to discuss with you today. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to just orient us about where we're going. I appreciate all of the work that you have done and you're going to do, and I will turn it over to Director Throne.
Before you get there, just one general question.
Sure.
Mayor, please. The only thing that has a carryover is the $275,000 for the fire. So we have spent, it is estimated that we will have spent, what is that, seven, $940,000 minus $275,000? Is that right? What's the estimate that we will have spent this year?
Yes, that'd be, if you take out the $275,000 for the
Switch mics here.
If you go to attachment four, the next, it's page 46.
The one we can't read because it's microscopic?
The one that you can read because it's microscopic. That's tabulated in the microscopic column H at the bottom. And it would be $802,013 is the estimated actual expenditure minus the rescue ambulance. Or does not include the rescue ambulance?
So you're talking about column H at the bottom? And that 802 already excludes the
That is correct.
That 802 already excludes. So we've spent more this year than we anticipated?
Actually, our budget for fiscal year 2021 for equipment was $1,077,513.
That is the bottom of column G.
Why does it say on that first one, proposed was $940,000?
That was the original budget. There were some modifications made during the fiscal year that totaled $137,000. And so the final budget, or the current budget, including the modifications, is $1.077 million.
Okay, then now, okay, thank you. That makes sense. I wasn't thinking of the modifications. Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question. As a follow-up question to that, so it clouded a little bit what I was going to ask you. But on page 2-3 or 19 of 90, so does that still make it accurate that as a result of each department's fiscal acumen, all capital purchases were made at or below? Is that indeed fact?
Yes, that is indeed fact. We're still, and some of the items are very close to their budget amount, and we're getting those final costs, but we did not exceed any budget.
Well, kudos. That's really impressive that that holds true in the end. So I hope those last few can squeak by. Very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, the first item is one that's Windows operating system and server upgrade. This is starting on page 48 of 90 or page 2-32, depending on how you're tracking this. There is, the system we have, the Windows system is 2008 and to, or current, can prevent cyber attacks. It is recommended to upgrade not only the software but also the servers. And so the anticipated expenditure is $6,400.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council on this item?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I think we all have extreme concern about cybersecurity. And I just want to make sure, this is probably the first time I've asked this type of question, but do you feel there's anything additional that should be spent to make absolutely certain as best we can that we have the best working software there is today?
We have Rick, our Intelis' IT third-party president on Zoom. He has certain points or data that he can point out to regards to things we've actually did this year that prevented us from cyber attack and also items for next year. The items that he reflected or recommending to council today is top-notch, meaning cybersecurity protection for the city as a whole.
So this is standard with what other cities of our size are doing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I had a question as well along the same lines. Because of various malware and cyber attacks, my understanding is that there's been a number of patches rolled out to government entities from groups supporting the FBI, et cetera. And I'm wondering, is, I have not kept up with what is the most current at all. But I have seen this frequently in the media and other sources. So does the Windows Server 2019, going back essentially more than a year, really, is that going to also be problematic if you? I'm sure we've been patching the Windows 2008, but we're now going to put in a newer but still outmoded Windows Server. And so will it have the same patches? Or can we be assured that have come out in like the last year? Does that make sense?
Let me try to answer that, and then maybe we can refer to Rick on the technical side. But I would say yes, being that Windows, most agencies, of course, use Windows, and not only agencies, business in general. They rely on Windows to make sure that they provide the latest, greatest patches. So whether it be the 2019 version of the server software that we are recommending, that will have the latest patches. And we want to, they are still going to support the 2009, but I believe that that sunset is coming soon, so that we want to move up to this new software as soon as possible.
All right. And is this the most current offering?
I believe so. Rick, are you there? Could you answer that question for the council member?
Yeah, I think he's working on his sound. I've seen him mute and unmute a couple of times.
Are you, are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Forgot to turn off that little button. Yeah, so the Server 2019 is the latest version that Microsoft has. They don't release a new version every year. It's usually about every four years. So this would be the latest compatible version that's available from Microsoft. And the 2008, which is the ones we need to replace, will go out of support this coming up year, which is why we need to stay on top of that.
All right, thank you. And you All right, thank you. And you will include when you install it, whatever patches are available and keep that as well.
Yes, we we patch all your systems and all of them currently are up to date so that we're able to do that and keep you guys current with the latest protections out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Have they, has Microsoft fixed the latest security problem that they've had?
I assume that's to me also. So. That's a. Evolving question. They are continuing to identify what it is. I will say, based on the support you've given us in the past years, we were able to identify on your system very quickly. Your network was targeted by the actors that were looking to exploit the Microsoft hole. But we were able to identify it very quickly and you guys were not exposed to that. Threat from the environment. The only reason I say is Microsoft is continuing to audit what's going on because it's a very large problem that they've seen recently. We've already done probably about fifteen scans on your network since it's happened to make sure there's, there's nothing else going on and. And everything looks clean and solid, but I don't think Microsoft nor us are going to claim victory probably for another couple of weeks till we see things settle down. But but my opinion is you guys are are clear and quite frankly, when a lot of other municipalities have been affected, you guys have been. Been handled pretty well.
One for the good guys. Thanks. I'd open it up for public comments, seeing no one from here. Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
There are no requests to comment on this item.
I'd like to bring it back to council for discussion. Do we have any comments from? Then can we have a straw vote from council if you could, what, if you would like to see this continued for final deliberation? Yes, thumbs up. Okay, good. Item number two, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next one is server room improvements. This is being proposed by the Finance Department and the estimated funding that would be needed is seven-thousand dollars. The server rooms in both City Hall and the police station are experiencing fifteen years of deferred maintenance. It's basically spaghetti over there and they're having a much. They're, it's starting to become problematic when they need to trace wires and do maintenance because they really don't know where any of the wiring is going. So it is proposed to sort all of that out and bring it into. Current organizational methodologies for wiring.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, are there any public comments?
There are no requests or comments.
Seeing none, then for deliberation from, bring it back to council for deliberation. Anybody have any thoughts or comments on this?
No, thank you for bringing it forward. It does look like my garage and that's a scary place, so. And this is much more important to the city, so I appreciate that we have a good process involved and Intelis can work with you and your staff to get this done.
All right, straw vote, those that would like to see this move forward.
I thought it was an arson investigation. I was wondering why you were showing us that.
Next item, please, battery backup.
Is also proposed by the Finance Department. The estimated capital expense is sixteen-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Currently, most of our battery backup systems that we have are old and really don't function very long when the power goes out. So it's proposed to replace them en masse as it's described in these in the report.
Any questions from council on this item?
Yeah, I did. This, of course, jumped out because now we're talking an extra ten-thousand or extra digit on the amount. And the picture is equally scary, so I understand that it's done or passed through, I guess I should say. However, I was. Concerned when looking at the number because to me, I had two questions, I guess. First off, is this something that's different? Don't we have a backup generator and doesn't it cook? Isn't it always hooked up and doesn't it support the City Hall area? Should there be a power outage or is there? I thought it was being recently updated. I don't know if that's been accomplished yet, so I'm not saying that. But I just mean, isn't that the purpose of having a generator? And then how are these different? At least as far as the City Hall area, you know, that obviously there is a longer list.
Well, I think there's a two-part answer to that. Councilmember, one part can be handled by Intelis, which is the need for having battery backup. At specific locations with regards to the emergency generator. It currently only supplies electricity to certain receptacles in certain parts of buildings. And so we have other equipment that's not yet hooked to that. That is a capital project that is ongoing, that you approved for for this fiscal year. And then the necessity for for the, for individual servers and individual computers to have battery backups, I will defer that to Intelis.
Okay, so on the, on the battery backup situation, the generators, when power goes out, they will sense that it goes out and kick on. But when you're dealing with servers or the intellectual property. That power disruption can cause a lot of damage within the equipment. The battery backup actually plugs in line with the generator. And if the power goes out, the equipment keeps running without interruption until the generator is able to be powered back on. So it keeps all the services up and more importantly, it protects the integrity of the equipment. So it doesn't suffer a unexpected power loss suddenly and possibly damage it.
Okay, and and the sense that I. Got from reading this request, and I don't know, maybe I guess this is back to you, Director Throne. Was that this is for sort of emergency backup, et cetera, use. So I was kind of surprised, for example, like we're going to add one at the. Lacy Park for the wireless. You know, payment that's a weekend thing. Of course, it may happen, but how much money would we really be at? I was concerned about some of the locations where we're now either adding this feature that we didn't have one previously. That seems to me might be overkill. So have you gone, I sure, I'm certain you have, but. That's a concern. And then so many of the, I'm looking at page for council fifty-one of ninety or two-thirty-five for you as well. That so many of these, I assume these were rated by Intelis are, it says UPS status. And they're actually remarkably a lot of good ones. I understand some are consolidation, fine. There's some new uses, which I just am concerned that we're worried about the. You know, credit card scanner at the Lacy Park entrance kiosk as requiring one of these. But it seems to me if they're good, why are we doing so many at one time? And is this not something like the computer replacements that can be scheduled out over a multi-year period, considering it's sixteen-thousand dollars? And so many of them are in good condition.
Well, councilmember, I can answer that question to Intelis. As it relates to facilities outside of City Hall, no one else is on a generator. So when the power is out at Lacy Park, I have no computing at Lacy Park at all until it restores the power. The same goes with the Stoneman area, San Marino Center, when the power is out, you really have no way of connecting in an emergency generator. So that disrupts operations. As it relates to the the condition of the battery backups, that was a survey that was done by Intelis. And I would ask for Mr. Balzer to describe their thought process on that.
So one of the critical elements we pick up with on the battery backup replacement is a little bit newer technology. That if the power goes out, your current battery backups don't notify us that something's going wrong. So even in that scenario, if the power goes out and there's nobody there to notify it, there's, there's nothing telling us that we need to deal with this and make sure that the. Equipment is either powered off. And it also doesn't give a actual rating within the batteries themselves. So we, although they may physically look okay and they're performing. There's really no way to determine how long they're going to stay up, which is really a function of the age of the systems. A prime example is when we did the. Project for the generator in the server room, one of the battery backups that was newer looked good and everything seemed fine. And when they unplugged the generator, it started beeping and it was going to go down in ten minutes. We had to run out with an extension cord and plug it in somewhere else because we were going to lose the power prematurely. Because the, the unit itself didn't have the intelligence to tell us that the the battery cells themselves were getting depleted. Other than when they fail, they go, which is too late.
So the recommendation then is based not just on the condition, but also the technology has changed. In this regard, so you, by replacing them, you have the ability to see the condition or whatever, see the battery, et cetera, things that you were outlining now.
Yeah, see the battery and also get notifications when power's out so we can contact city staff, especially if it's after hours and let them know there's a. Power loss and we need to get somebody on site to address it or have somebody out there take a look at what's going on.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, because in that race, so if you take a look at Lacy Park, it's not just wireless credit card, it's also the entire network. And what is voice?
Voice is the telephone.
Okay. Where you list phones and you also lose voice, but that's the same thing.
It's for the Internet protocol being that we use Internet voice phones more than the land, landline phone. So when the Internet goes down, it goes down with it. So we want to prevent that.
Right, so just to follow up on councilmember talk, so there's one in the Public Works break room, which we're going to be replacing, where there isn't one now. And there's also one. At Lacy Park that's separate for the credit card processing of the entrance fees on the weekend. And they can't be together?
They're in two separate physical locations, and so they're, they're, they're not able to share a battery backup.
And this is a total of about what, fourteen individual battery backup units that aggregated come up to about sixteen-thousand dollars for fourteen units?
Yes, so it is fourteen units and it's, and portions of that, of course, is labor possible or Intelis install.
Okay, any other questions from council on this item? I could open up for public comment. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment for deliberations. Let's have our straw vote. Those that would like to see this continue to the next phase, raise your hand.
I would only want to continue if we had a staggered over to you here.
So then, you know, take those comments into consideration when it comes back for the final, final budget. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next one is. Oldie but goodie. This is your computer replacement program. We're in, I believe, the third year of replacing computers systematically through the city. The estimated cost for this coming fiscal year is thirty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. And your finance director and IT provider are here to answer any questions you might have about this item.
Thank you. So this is year three of a five-year program?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from council on this topic? Seeing that, is there any public comments on this topic?
There are no requests to speak on this topic.
Public comment, bring it back to council. Comments or considerations on this before we have our straw vote? Please raise your hand if you'd like to see this continue on to the final budget. Thank you. Next item, please.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, councilmember Shepard Army, are you a no vote or are you still flipping? Oh, you're yes. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Now, we are through with finance. We're now going to move to the Community Development Department. The department is requesting that their two-thousand-and-twelve smart car be replaced with an energy-efficient vehicle. Because it's exceeded its functional life and requires extensive repairs, generally speaking. They also are requesting, in addition to the fleet, with the acquisition of a second vehicle due to the increased. Work activity for the code enforcement program. So they're requesting fifty-five-thousand dollars be budgeted. These funds are proposed to come from the air quality district grants that we get for energy-efficient vehicles.
Any questions from council on this topic? Are there any? Things that we will have to do extra based upon this grant?
We do do a annual report to AQMD for the funds. Even if we don't utilize these funds, we are required to report on our usage of funding or future usage.
But in, in, I appreciate that. I would imagine that would be expected with any grant. But is, there's nothing that says if you spend this money here, you have to do this other than report?
No.
Okay.
And I follow up on that, so the, as to the funding. If there, if we decide to proceed with this, is the funding complete or is it discretionary on their part? Like they may give us part of this amount or some percentage or none at all. I don't.
It's a hundred percent grant funded, meaning it's from the ASC AQMD funding allocation that we get. So on annually, we get approximately nineteen-thousand dollars from AQMD. And we've been putting it aside because we've been, we haven't placed, we found, we haven't found a place to utilize these funds. So we are recommending at this time to utilize some of this AQMD funding that we've been accumulating over the years for these vehicles.
And will it be enough to cover this projected price?
So current, we end, we, we have a total of a hundred-and-thirty, looking at my budget, hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars currently in AQMD funding. So it will cover those costs.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had, I had just another question. When, generally speaking, when you do this, I went online, of course, and looked up the Kelley Blue Book of a two-thousand-and-twelve smart car. And they're about four or five thousand dollars depending on mileage and, and, you know, the accoutrements of the car. But so I was interested in what is done. It's not really a salvage situation at the end. So what do we do or is it possible to donate it somewhere that is needy of such a vehicle? And the other thing is, I know you say that there are policy repairs, but what's written about smart cars is that they're very easy. You can actually even change the oil without lifting them off the ground or they're, you know, like a modern VW, if you will. You know, and I even do that in auto shop in high school. So there is basic of a car that you could get. And so get around safely with all the airbags. So it's actually a very good unit, but I just. And I, there is no mileage in this report, and I'm wondering why I'd look to try to find, I think last year you gave us a report of all the. Vehicles in the city, and I could not find it anywhere. And I know, I'm sure you sent it to me a hundred times, but I would love to see that or when. Or let us know because some of them did have mileage, and I think that's relevant, you know, to our considerations and costs. So what's the mileage on this one?
Well, as I'm, as I'm looking for the mileage, I can answer the, the other part of your.
I have the mileage.
Director Cervantes has it.
So just type it in here next time.
Yeah, twenty-two-thousand-seven-and-forty-one. The twenty-two-seven-four-one.
The twenty-two-thousand miles and it's supposed to, they're estimated to go up to a hundred thousand mileage in their lifetime. So it's quite a low mileage vehicle.
And how many, how many miles a year do you put on the car typically? And then also why two cars rather than just one car?
Well, I'm looking to replace this one, of course, the last, the reason for this request really came from this fiscal year and the amount of repairs that we've had to do to the smart car. The last repair that we did with a smart car took it out of commission, of course. Looking at about a couple of thousand dollars for the work that was done to the car. And so given that, that the amount of work that's been put into the car as far as repairs and whatnot, we've basically. The repairs have sort of exceeded the value of the car. That's, that's the intent here, the replacement. So we're looking to replace that car, looking to add an additional car to get our code enforcement officers out there in the field more often. Because right now they're driving their personal vehicles.
Which is probably fine. And twenty-two-thousand miles just seems like that's when I buy a car.
I mean, I gotta replace it with a smart? No, not the smart car, no. Oh, well, we're looking to replace it with a car that qualifies under the funding for AQMD.
Any other questions on this? I could open it up for.
May I? Thank you. I'm going to digress just a hair, but if I don't, I'll never remember it. This whole air quality money that we get, as a side note, could we just get maybe a three-to-five-year? But a sheet of credits earned and what we've spent and what the balance looks like and what. but sheet of credits earned and what we've spent and what the balance looks like and what it can be spent on? That would really be helpful going forward and it lets us get an overview of the areas this can go to. Thank you so much.
And then a question for Director Cervantes, we probably reinforce the mileage when somebody uses their own car. How many, what's the cost of that? How much, how much are we spending?
We reimburse, I believe it's 55 cents.
Right. But I mean, I'm trying to get comfortable with buying a vehicle that's going to require maintenance and, and, and everything else. When, where I come from, you just paid somebody the 50 cents a mile to drive around. That's part of their job.
Yeah, right now we're spending upwards of probably close to about $1,000 in mileage reimbursements.
A year?
About a year. Yes, every year. The other factor, if I may, as related to code enforcement is security, of course, with being out in the field, looking to enforce, you know, any various violations. I, I unfortunately have to report that our code enforcement officers have been verbally abused on the field. And so they have some concerns with, with driving around in a person vehicles and receiving that kind of, 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 you know, abuse, I guess, for lack of a better word, saying it. So the other issue is, is not only that the value of the car, the smart card now sort of being out of the picture here is, is really security is another reason.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from staff?
I don't want to beat the, but with 22,000 miles and to use so much of, of money that could be spent potentially on other things as Vice Mayor Jacobowski is interested in pursuing, I'm trying to figure out, so at the end of this, if, if the council decides to replace two and it gets rid of the smart car, what happens to it? And does the city get seller on whatever, online?
The city would go through a surplusing process. If the original purchase price of the vehicle was over $30,000, it would come to you for approval to surplus it. If it was less than 30,000, that's within the discretion of the purchasing officer and the city manager to surplus it. Regardless, we're required to auction it by our purchasing ordinance. And generally speaking, when you take a government car to auction, you get pennies per pound. Basically, the, the vehicles are really worth effectively nothing. Any proceeds from that returns to the general fund as a sale of surplus property revenue item.
Any other questions from council? I could open up for public comment. Are there any public comments?
No requests to come on.
Public comments for deliberation. And then council members have any thoughts on this before we struggle?
I would like to see the document that I requested, just to see where the big picture is on this.
Any other thoughts or comments on this?
I also am concerned with replacing a vehicle with 22,000 miles.
Yeah, I too am concerned about replacing the vehicle with 22,000 miles when you expect 150,000 out of, out of cars. I'm concerned about having two rather than one. I don't have any problem with people using their, their own cars when there's an extra vehicle around. You know, kind of by definition, you're spending more money on tires and oil and gas and getting it washed. And, you know, there's a lot of hidden costs in there too. So I'm having a hard time with this item as, as presented.
But in, in my impression, I would go with one new one and, and keep the old. I don't think that there, there's, if we're going to be serious about our code enforcement, there's an authority that goes with driving a, a car with a ceremonial logo on it. We, we, they're out, they're being seen by the community. But I would go with one new one and keep the old one as well because they don't, both, both won't be working eight hour or 40 hour weeks. So is that right?
That's actually not correct.
Oh, well, it is.
We have now, thanks to your generosity, we have three full-time code enforcement officers. One is the code enforcement manager, and then there are two code enforcement officers. We also have a part-time code enforcement officer. And then you also have an Aldo who sometimes drives around. But even if you leave him out of the equation, you have three and a half full-time positions. And currently we only have one city vehicle.
To nudge this along, let's try this first, straw poll, either no cars, one car or two cars. And I'll ask you to raise your hand on one of those three options. Does that make sense? Those that would like to see no cars, raise your hand, please. When it would like to see one car move forward, please raise your hand. When it would like to see two cars move forward, please raise your hand.
You got to vote for something.
Can I ask another question? How often do you have two, you know, enforcement officers out there? I mean, at the same time? Well, right now, sort of a tricky situation with, so we have a Ford Escape that's dedicated to our building inspector. Being that the building inspector is doing virtual inspections as a result of COVID, that vehicle is available right now. But as soon as we get out of this pandemic, that vehicle will go back to, to that inspector to drive around the entirety of the day doing inspections. And so that's available to us now plus the smart car.
Director, how many code enforcement officers do you have in the field at the same?
At the same time. Oh, sorry. I will say about two at the same time, one personal and one in the smart car.
Okay. The staff have the direction that they'd like for the next phase of this?
We're close. So councilman Blong, you went for two. And but if got the numbers that made you feel comfortable, is there a number that you could weigh in on just so that we know what to bring back?
What I'm hearing in direction for staff is bring back a proposal for two, but really, you know, scrub the numbers and the rationale because it's going to be a tougher sell for two, but probably an easier sell for one.
No, I would think it's the reverse. Three of us supported one. So we should get the proposal for one. And then we'll deal with it next year if we put.
It's the same. We could always cut it back to one.
Let's just have more discussion on it as we move along and get more info. Just to be clear, the next time you'll see this again will be on May 28th. So go with the majority of what the mayor.
Thank you. Which was one. Which was one. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We now move to the Police Department. They are proposing a $3,000 capital equipment expenditure for net motion, which controls the connection between their patrol vehicle laptops and the police station computer network. As it indicates here, this system, the current system they have will be discontinued later this year. And they're recommending that they replace their system in entirety. Intelisys is on the line as well as Chief and Contral is here to answer any questions you might have specifically about it.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions at staff? Seeing none. Are there any public comments on this item?
There are no requests to come on.
Seeing none, we post, close publicly comment, bring it back for deliberation. Any thoughts or comments on this from council? Seeing none, let's go for the straw, straw vote. How many of those could support this moving forward? Thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next one from our Police Department is completion of their license plate reader camera program. This was something that was started this current fiscal year. They would like to complete it this next fiscal year so that they can have license plate reader cameras installed on all of their patrol vehicles. This would be funded with a Homeland Security grant and there would not be any city funds involved in it.
Thank you. Any questions from staff on this, from council on this?
Again, any, any ties that requires to do anything extra as a result of this?
Morning Mayor and Council. The only additional work is working with the Homeland Security to tell them and completely audits and required paperwork for the, the cameras and the grant. That's all.
It is. We already have how many put in cars?
Two of our old vehicles have cameras that are not functioning right now. And these new cameras will be placed on the new vehicles.
Have we, is there any liability that's created as a result? I know that we're working with the Homeland Security and, and I know the ACLU loves them. But has it created anything further, any problems associated that the city has to spend legal fees on? And in, as it relates to these cameras?
There could be public records requests. There could be discovery or there will be discovery requests as we go to court, but we'll be providing the footage from the cameras for court purposes as we would any other.
Piece of evidence.
Piece of evidence, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Chief, thank you. Just to clarify, two points in my mind along the same for future legal issues, these only focus on the license plate. Or do they also do make and model or any other identifiable information or retain, you know, on those that's gathered to this, these cameras?
The cameras will focus on the license plate information. That license plate information will obviously give us the make, model of car and who owns it.
Okay. But as far as the evidence gathered or whatever we might call it, information gathered, we don't have that listed or reported. If you follow up with the license plate.
Only as if license plate data would be requested as evidence for the, any kind of prosecution.
Okay. And the other is, do we share this information with any other agencies when we do a license plate?
Yes, we do. We have a standing agreement with the other agencies within Los Angeles County to share the data. And the reason for the sharing of the data is since vehicles are mobile, they go from one jurisdiction to another. So we can alert another jurisdiction of a hit we may receive on their car that's wanted in their city.
And that's our existing policy and it will remain the same.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. What's the live expectancy of these cameras?
The agreement is for four years or five years with four years additional, the first year and then four years additional maintenance fees are covered in the grant.
Okay. But I mean, after five years, do they ever say like how long? This thing would like 10 years?
Technology has about a two and a half year. Maybe Rick can back me up on this. Has about a two-year life and then things get better.
Yes.
One of the other things we'll be looking at is there's beta versions of our Flock safety cameras that are being developed for a mobile version. And we'll see what happens in four, four or five years. Or someone else will probably see what's going on in four or five years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this topic?
Thank you. Since you are a chief in the know, this is a second year of a Homeland Security grant. Do you expect that these will be continuing for the specific types of issues that they would cover? And if so, what would you see as the city's next step? Just so we can see if this is a one-time only with a two-year project or if you see this as being on, ongoing. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Thank you. The, it's called a shish gap grant, but it's for the Department of Homeland Security for those cities that don't touch the city of Los Angeles. We have a separate grant for that. And every year, the Los Angeles County Police Chiefs Association discusses appropriate programs and projects and funding for those programs and projects that is equitable to those cities. And we have used them in the past for mobile radios. We've used them for the cameras and based upon the most important item that each city sees or needs, we can either join the group or we can also put in our own proposal for funding. But generally we go with the group because it works much better and it interrelates to all the other jurisdictions.
So it can either be a similar type of item and if it's not, they sort of met it out by product, city size, if you will.
No.
How does this group come to consensus? It, it is a good thing if this is going to be ongoing.
We try to be equitable to all jurisdictions and what is most important in the protection of Homeland Security for the, those jurisdictions affected by this grant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions at staff? Any public comments on this topic?
There are no requests for comments.
Close public comment now for deliberations from council. Any thoughts on this issue?
No, thank you for bringing this forward, Chief. I think this is excellent.
Seeing none, straw vote. Those that would like to see this move on, please raise your hand. Thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next one is proposed by the Police Department are e-citation readers. And I, there's a long explanation of it. I think that Chief was probably the most suitable person to encapsulate that for you. This is a proposed $60,000 capital equipment expense for next fiscal year.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor and City Council, thank you very much. I will try and be as brief as possible. The state of California several years ago initiated the Racial and Identity Profiling Act. Part of that act requires police officers when they make stops of any individuals, whether it's a pedestrian, a vehicle, anything other than a crime in progress to identify and record who they stopped. It's racial identification, it is gender, it's perceived gender, ethnicity, many things. It's a form that takes about 10 to 15 minutes to complete by hand. What, the reason why we're requesting e-citation riders is the e-citation rider and the software associated with it will self-populate data, whether we're writing a traffic ticket, we're completing the RIPA or the Racial Identity Profiling Act information, a field interview stop where we may stop and talk to someone, complete a field interview card that helps us for future investigations, or we write a parking ticket. But the most important part of this is it self-populates, it cuts down on the time. So the information, for the most part, on a traffic ticket will self-populate into the RIPA form. And then we'll add some additional information and everything is done all at once. We are mandated to do this. We are mandated to provide this information to the State Department of Justice. There is a possibility in the future that we can be reimbursed. Because generally when there is a legislation that requires an agency to do something, it can be reimbursed for all associated costs. There was no reimbursement when this was approved by the legislature. However, earlier this year, or maybe the end of last year, the city of San Diego successfully sued the state to be reimbursed. There was a very brief window of opportunity to be reimbursed. And it only involved those agencies that were currently involved in the project. We start next year, or rather this year, and go and have to be online by 2023. We will explore that once we start the program. But that is something that hopefully will be there to reimburse us in the future.
Thank you. Any questions from council, the chief?
Just wondering, is this something that runs at, through their mobile devices, like the computers that are in the cars with the personnel? Or is this something that is after the fact when they file the final report? You know, when, when does this kick in? When is this used?
This is a standalone device, separate from any other electronic device in the vehicle that allows us to do, write traffic tickets, parking tickets, field interview cards, and of course, the racial identifying information.
Good thing you got the bigger cars then. Now I see.
Yes.
Fill up with a lot of computer devices.
We have lots of stuff.
I think this is a great time saver and will help our officers better protect our community by doing it. They'll have more time and be better able to do those things that we appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Any comments from the public, please?
There are no requests to come on.
Comments, we'll close that. Any other thoughts or comments from council? Straw vote then, please.
Just probably another unfunded mandate. Governments like to do that to us. It's a great, it's a great program.
Those who like to see this move forward to the next phase. Thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item, the final one from the Police Department is a request to replace two of their detective vehicles. These vehicles are in fact scheduled and as recommended by the Fleet utilization program that we discussed last year. Their current vehicles have lots of miles and they really don't act very much as under. Their current vehicles have lots of miles and they really don't act very much as undercover vehicles because they look like police cars. So the, the department is proposing to utilize $70,000 of air district funding to buy appropriate detective vehicles that they will be able to be undercover. And the chief is available to answer any questions you have about the vehicles and our finance structure about the air district funding.
Thank you. Any questions from council on this topic?
I, I do. That's 70, that's 35,000 all in for the car, including the equipment that, that is typically seen in, in these type of thing.
Uh, no, there'd be an additional 11,000, approximately 11,500 for emergency equipment and lock boxes for both of the vehicles.
11,000 a car or 11,000 collectively?
We believe 11,500 total.
Okay.
And I had a question.
Please.
So this is, is this the same monies that we discussed with Director Cervantes accumulated? That could go to purchase vehicles through the other use?
Yes, it is the same funding source of AQMD fund.
And to date, you said, I think that we had 119, but if you add the two requests together, it will be 125. So this would exhaust our current amount.
The current balance is expected to be $131,000 of AQMD funding. So yes, if we were to approve.
119, can you say that again?
131,000.
Oh, 131.
131, yes.
I can't hear anything. I can't read today.
Clearly, it's talking a lot of loss with these men.
She's, she's been out celebrating too.
I started early. It's the green beer with breakfast.
Yeah, so 131. And if we were to move forward with the PD vehicles, the two with AQMD funds and the other two, we would both most likely maximize all the fund balance of the AQMD fund.
And can it be used for any other vehicles though? I guess that's my, you know, when we're doing this type of thing, can it also be used for, what is it? The fire department's request, like is there a limitation? I mean, I understand it has to be an energy efficient, I'm assuming, or has some category that it falls?
The funding, AQMD funding sources is really for air quality. So if it's vehicles that we want to replace, we want to only replace it regards to the list that they have, or we can also do infrastructure related items such as EV charging stations, let's say.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So the additional $12,000 that would need, be needed to make these vehicles road ready. Where would we see that in the budget process?
Coming up very soon. I think.
Actually, Council, I apologize. We, we were not coordinated on this and we don't have that extra 12,000 budgeted in here anywhere.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, I apologize. We were not coordinated on this one and we do not have that extra 12,000 budgeted in here anywhere. So this would be an item that you aren't seeing, but it would be listed in here as an additional 11,500. And Finance Director Chang, would that be eligible for AQMD?
No, that, this will come out of.
All right. So that would come out of the capital fund. So I apologize. That's our mistake.
We will envision then a page of 70,000 that is refundable. And then we will see a separate page in our mind. We'll call it 12,000 for practical purposes that we will visually add on, correct? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Is there any public comments on this item?
There are no requests for comments.
Close public comment for council's deliberation. Any thoughts or comments before we shuffle this? Seeing none, would like to see this proceed to the next level?
And thank you for telling us how many miles in the years.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And if we can give the crown vic to the Blues Brothers, I think they'd be happy.
We will do that.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we move on to the fire department. Uh, this item before you is engine rescue ambulance mobile radio, radios. This is the second year of their procurement program. This is something that's phased from last year. And they're seeking to complete their purchase of radios in the amount of $56,000 out of your capital equipment fund. Chief Rueda is available for questions specifically on the radios.
Thank you. Any questions from council on this item? Any public comments on this item?
There are no requests for comments.
Close public comment for council's deliberation. Any thoughts on this from anyone?
I think this is necessary and we should move ahead.
So then we'll move on to the straw vote. How many would like to see this move forward? Okay, your feedback. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the next item is the next turn of replacements for command staff vehicles for the battalion chief. The cost of that vehicle would be precisely $50,720 and this would be a capital purchase expense. The existing vehicle has 76,885 miles on it.
Any questions from council on this item?
When, when was the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, no.
When was the last, how old's the one that it's going to replace?
The replacement is a 2015 Explorer.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I was also the only, I did find the document because I couldn't find the total one, but in 2019 your department, or you, put together, Chief, a annual inspection report. And in that, I didn't, couldn't find the one from this last year, but there are several, two battalion cars listed and two explorers listed. In addition to the ambulances and the engine, if you will. And so I was confused as to, this is one of the two explorers that we have currently operating or have, have, has, they're all in good conditions here. But again, this is two years ago and having about 50,000. So this is for one of those vehicles and it's now the battalion?
Well, that would be for the battalion chief, but yes, this is the second explorer that was referenced in that document.
For the division chief?
Yes.
Okay. And other than that, are there three? Personal command?
Did, we did replace the battalion, the response vehicle that we share with San Marino and South Pasadena. And last year we replaced the fire chief's vehicle.
Which also wasn't a for, and now.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
So is this, so there still is one other command vehicle, the battalion that is just for, or it says battalion nine. So, and there's battalion 703. So I don't know which, but the one that's the new of the two Suburbans we have as well? I'm just trying to get how many we have.
That is the vehicle that we share with South Pasadena. That's the one that sits in the Eastern Bay of the fire station and one of the on-duty battalion chiefs drives that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Do you have any other questions on this? Seeing none, any public comments on this item?
There are no requests for comments.
Close public session for council's deliberation, thoughts or comments. Any thoughts on this? No? Okay. Straw vote. How many would like to see this move forward? Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the next one, as mentioned by the city manager, is a re-budget for the rescue ambulance replacement. It is currently in this fiscal year's budget, but due to COVID, statistically, they've not been able to get the vehicle ready to be delivered this fiscal year. So we're requesting that the funds just be conveyed over into next fiscal year to complete the purchase.
Thank you. Any questions on this from council?
Because of the delay, has there been any change in price?
Perhaps Chief can answer that if there's been any changes in the price of the rescue ambulance.
Yeah, I just don't know what to do to delay now getting either higher price or.
No, we can't afford a higher price. We spent right up to the, right up to our limit on this one. So we're going to hold them to what they quoted us and, but there have been delays obviously because of COVID.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any public comments on this item?
There are no requests for comments.
Close public comments. Any thoughts or comments from council? Straw vote time. All those that would like to see this move on. Thank you. Next item, please.
The Parks and Public Works Department is not making any requests for acquisitions this year, so we're going to move to Community Services Department. This is the Barth Community Room Audio Visual Upgrade Project. This is something that's approved for this fiscal year. I would like to mention that in the description, it says that we're doing audio first this year and video next year. We actually have that reversed in our actual timeline of doing things and that's an error on, on my part. And when you see AV, you always think audio first and video second. It does not change the cost in any way, shape or form. When we did bid this job earlier this year, we found it to be much more expensive than we had anticipated. So consulting with Community Services Director Hallworth, we, we are recommending that the project be split into two fiscal years. Complete this fiscal year with the video upgrades and then next fiscal year for $15,000 appropriation, complete the audio component of.
Thank you. Any questions from council on this?
I guess I'm still confused. So we have something in the budget for this current year. Which is 19,500?
That is correct.
And you're saying that that's the amount that pays for the items that are included in the description on the bottom of the page?
It will be for video.
I'm sorry.
It, it will be for the video portion of the audio video upgrades.
Right. So now I'm directing your attention to the bottom of 263 where it says it's a high definition projector, a retractable screen, which we already have, appropriate lighting, which I thought was in the future because we wanted to do that when we have a lighting person here, and equipment connections.
Uh, that, that was our original description of what we thought we were going to be able to do. We've had to scope it down because that, that was much more expensive. And also in council's discussion last year about improving the lighting in the bathroom, we thought that perhaps we could be doing that in conjunction with some work with San Marino Center. So this year, trying to stay within our appropriation of 19,500, we looked at the video component was the easy one to do. And to be able to get that accomplished this year and then for next year, move on to the audio portion of it so that we can have a system in the bathroom, the audio system would be the same as the system in San Marino Center so that we could share equipment because as you see, a lot of our audio equipment now is mobile. And if we have similar setup in both locations, it, it'll be more effective for us. We won't have to purchase as much equipment that's actually hardwired into the bill.
So understanding that this is video, what does it include for 19,500?
It is all the connections to upgrade what we have there. We have a very old projector. There are, there's a wiring that needs to be done to connect it into the, the city's system so that it can work with our, our, our internet. And it's, it's about $11,000 of parts and about, says, I think about six or $7,000 of labor to install it because the, the room is architectural and you just can't put cables on, on the wall surfaces. You have to fish them through behind all of the, the ceiling work.
And I assume we're envisioning having audio visual capability in the San Marino Center project.
That is correct.
So, I mean, now we have, as you said, mobile, but I mean, to make that installed so that this room can be used for many different, similar uses to the bathroom, but on a larger scale.
That is exactly our plan, council member.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions with staff? Seeing none, open for public comment, please.
There are no requests for comments.
Close public comment. Back to council for any final thoughts or deliberations?
I don't think I could support this at this time. I think this is I have a lot of money for things that might be better encompassed when we have experts here to do this room as well. And that would be a twofer to get that room better organized and lit. And so this is kind of doing half or less than half because it doesn't involve the lighting for a significant sum of money.
Good. Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments, Vice Mayor?
Can I make a question? I'm sorry. And this would be, I presume, for the city manager. I know that with our county now moving into a new tier and new possibilities for our library, the bathroom would probably become the highest density room in the library. Realistically, when would you, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, possibly imagine the bathroom being used for its intended purpose in 2021?
Oh, good and easy question. Um, I mean, I don't know. I, you know, as you said, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what's coming. The only use of the bathroom that I can foresee with almost complete surety is as we enter into construction, presuming that the council approves the construction agreement whenever the time comes for the San Marino Center is going to be council meetings, probably moving back into the bathroom. And at that point, you, you might decide that you want to have the AV done in advance of that so that the technology is set up to be as useful as possible for your council meetings. Or you might decide, as Councilmember Shepherd Rami said, which is what you decided for the lighting, that it makes more sense to, you know, do a twofer and be more cost effective. So obviously that's your, that's your policy decision. In terms of like renting the room out for events, I, I think we're a ways off from that. We, we actually have staff working in that room right now for physical distancing purposes. I, I would not expect certainly before the new fiscal year, I don't think we'll be moving back to renting anything. But of course, you're asking about next budget year and, and there's so much uncertainty. I don't know.
And, and one more time, when you would expect construction to begin?
I think in a, in a perfect world, which of course we live in, probably this fall, fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or thoughts or comments from council? Straw whole time. Those that would like to see this continue to the next phase, please raise your hand. I believe that completes the requested equipment on the capital projects.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. Uh, following the section you just went through, there are the future requests, things that are planned to be moved forward in future fiscal years. The council can ask questions about them. You can also, if you so choose, move any of them into the fiscal year if you think that they're so warranted. Otherwise, that would conclude the equipment portion of your capital program. Would like to take the opportunity to thank my colleagues who have spent a lot of time. This is a very complex document. It's not inside everyone's wheelhouse. And they did a very awesome effort in putting their information together and being prepared. And I, I compliment them and I appreciate them a lot because it is, it is a, a lot of complexity, a lot of things you have to think about in the future. You have to anticipate what your needs are. You also have to anticipate questions from the council and the community as to the justification for it. And we will be back again a week from Friday with capital, infrastructure, capital improvements.
Can I just ask one question? There were two things that are mentioned here. I think it's the self-contained breathing apparatus that may come on. And I discussion or description section, it said they may come forward should there be an ability to get them at a lower cost because of a Los Angeles larger purchasing program. So do we have to include that in the budget and then carry it over or is it just something that the chief and you would bring forward if that happens?
That's what we would do. It's the latter, council member. At this point, there's no reason to budget for it because we don't know if we're going to be able to do that, but we would bring it to you out of budget cycle if we were able to get an excellent deal and perhaps find other sources of money. We'll just bring it back to you when that moment comes.
Okay, thank you.
Does any council member have any questions or comments on those seven items for future? Would anyone like to answer any of those seven items for the current year? Okay, thank you. So when we move on to written communications and public writings, do we have any written communications or public writings for distribution?
There are none.
Seeing none. Public comments? Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time?
There are no requests for comments.
Thank you. Future agenda items. Do any council members want to suggest a future agenda topic? Seeing none at this time. We'll adjourn the meeting after an hour and 31 minutes.
That is.
You know, because it's out of cycle, we actually added it to the last, so the last one.